I am ready.
Call this meeting to order. Start first with the introduction of those folks who are from either commission who are actually here. So Mike Larson, City Zoning Commission. Jerry Reddick. From the county. And then Nicole, you can introduce staff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Jack King, who's City Zoning Commission, on online on Zoom. We also have Tyler Bush from the County Zoning Commission and Troy Boucher from the County Zoning Commission online. So we have several commissioners that are joining us online. Monica Plecker is our Zoom host, and she'll be helping people come in and out of the meeting and with public comments. And then we have Robin Bartley, who will be on our public phone line at 237-6120 for when public comment is being received. Please call in, and she will put you on the speaker with everyone here in the room and on Zoom. We also have Jeanette Feig, who is helping check people into our meeting room today. And then, of course, Community Seven Television staff is here as well.
Thank you, Nicole. With that, I'll also restate that phone number, 406-237-6120. Now, if anyone would like to make any public comment on anything not on the agenda tonight, now is the opportunity to do that.
Well, here we go. We have public comment.
Not sure this was for us or not.
Greg and Dan are not available.
Greg and?
Greg can call and Dan Brooks are not available.
Okay. All right. So we'll go with the County Zoning Commission as quorum for tonight's hearing.
Do I still have to run the meeting?
Yes, you still have to run the meeting. All right.
That already seems fair. I'm assuming we had no public comment on anything not related to the agenda. Let me just briefly go over the process. We will have a presentation by staff on the section code that we are looking at tonight. Then an opportunity of any of the commissioners, city, or county, to ask any questions of staff. After that, we will open it up for public comments. We'll start with those who are in the room and move to Zoom or whatever other medium that you want to call in on after that. So we'll start with those folks who want to testify here first, and then go to the virtual comments second. And with that, Nicole, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's hearing is on the new draft code sections for signs, 271400, nonconformities, 271500, and a last look at 271800, measurements and definitions. We've been using measurements and definitions all throughout our public hearings and reviewing different sections of the code because all of the definitions and the way we measure things are going to be in one part of the code moving forward. So we're just going to start off with one of my favorite subjects, which is signs. I'm going to share my screen with you on Zoom. So everyone online and in the room here can see the presentation. And technology will work for me today, I'm hoping, perhaps. Okay. I just need to get it advancing. Perhaps my mouse shut itself off. Oh, there we go. So first, the foundation of all the work of Project Recode Steering Committee and working groups is based on the 2016 growth policy for the City of Billings, the 2016 Lockwood growth policy for the county, and then the 2008 county growth policy. So all of our work is based on those goals and policy statements adopted by the city and the county. So the Steering Committee was appointed in August of 2017 after the Planning Board initiated this process to amend the zoning to help us meet those goals of our growth policies. And as part of their initial work, they set down some foundation principles for the working groups, staff, and consultant team to look at and be aware of as we recrafted this code. There are eight main topics and categories, so we wanted to make sure we clarified and simplified the code, that we really put regulations on things that mattered in our community, and spent a lot of time on that. We wanted to preserve and protect the rights of owners and residents as well, that we wanted to prevent conflicts between users and property owners, that we wanted to give developers options and context for their developments. We also wanted to make sure we were maintaining the things in our community that we really did care about a lot. We also knew that there were gaps in our sign code and our zoning code that needed to be filled and fixed. And last but not least, to support the prosperity of our community and the financial pillars that keep this city and county moving forward. So first, the Sign Code Working Group consisted of several dedicated individuals, both from the sign community, the sign companies that produce and install signs in our community, as well as people who have been involved just in community character and building community fabric in Yellowstone and the City of Billings. The signs on the screen that you see here were favorite signs that each member was asked to bring to one of the Sign Code Working Group meetings so that we could talk about what they liked about signage in our community, so we could decide where to focus our work. So the existing city sign codes consist of seven, or eight, or nine, depending on how you count them, different sign codes. And there's the standard sign code that applies most everywhere, but we have special sign code districts for Montana Avenue, which really is the same thing as the historic district. We have entryway zones that are for the interchanges from Interstate 90 into our community. We have the medical corridor, which is a great zoning tool that was put in place in the 80s and has worked well for 35-plus years. We have the South 27th Street corridor, about the same time, but didn't work so well for that corridor. We also have the North and South Shiloh Corridor Overlay District that has special sign requirements. In the county, there are only two sign codes that apply, and that's the standard, the standalone county sign code. When the city and county zoning was merged in 1997, this piece of the county zoning code stood alone by itself. It was not included in that unification. So we've always had this county sign code that stands by itself. And then, of course, the entryway zone districts, which the county and the city adopted together. So we have a lot of regulation. We have over 120 pages of regulations of signs, and they can be as different across the street from one another as from Metro Park to the hospital corridor. So it generally doesn't make sense to people who are not working the sign code every day. So that is just me and a few other sign companies who know all the different parts of the code. So it's very confusing. So that was a big part of our job, was going through all of that regulation and figuring out what parts we wanted to keep that were the best parts of the existing code. So here's our illustrious Sign Code Working Group, and they did work well together. Not that we didn't have arguments or disagreements along the way, but they certainly came together on this draft code that you're seeing today. And they adopted four focuses for their work. The context was crucial. In other words, the zone districts that were being developed for the city and the county gave the context for what types of signs should be allowed in those districts. That it was important that the code is clear, that you don't have one part of the code contradicting a previous part, that we use illustrations and charts and graphs wherever possible to make it readable and understandable, and that we consolidate wherever we can the different sign codes into one. So and then finally, but not the least, was that sign codes, because they regulate speech, are scrutinized almost daily by courts in the United States. So we have to ensure that we're regulating not the content, but the time, place, and manner of that speech. So content neutrality and other legal issues were a big watchword as we worked on this code. So I just pulled out seven pieces that I thought were major parts of the sign code update, and also our national motto, e pluribus sunum. Out of many, one. So we're going to have one sign code. We're not going to have two. We're not going to have a special sign code district just for this part of, one part of one street, that it's all going to come together into one. So we're updating the purposes of our sign code, and we spent a lot of time, as the Sign Code Working Group, discussing that purposes section, that we are going to retain the billboard moratorium within the city limits. The county never adopted that moratorium, so it's not going to apply in the county code. It's not in there, but it is in the city limits. That we are ensuring content-neutral regulations throughout this code. One part of the code that we talked a lot about, and everyone agreed, was that we needed to regulate window signs as signs. Right now, under the code, it says if it's on the inside of the window, it's not a sign. And you can't regulate it the same way you would regulate a sign that's placed on the outside of the window. Doesn't make sense. That we went through and clarified exempt signs, in other words, exempt from permitting, and what a temporary sign was, and how it could be placed on a property and how it could be used on property. And then we also talked about the private signs in public right-of-ways, and how that was an area we definitely did not want to keep regulating or allowing private signs in public right-of-ways through a permitting scheme. Also, we talked a lot about what happens when we change the code, and we've changed this sign code a lot over the years. And every time we change a code, we create a nonconforming sign, and it affects that sign in certain ways. And we thought this would be a perfect opportunity to clarify that and make it plain what can and cannot happen with a nonconforming sign. So we're going to jump right in. So our purposes updated. To avoid sign proliferation. So probably everybody has a favorite piece of road they drive where there are so many signs that you can't even see the one you're looking for, but you know it's there because you've been there before, and that's the only reason why you know where to turn. So sign proliferation can cause confusion. It can cause, you know, businesses to not be successful because there are so many signs that their sign just doesn't stand out. So we think this will also help to enhance business and commercial corridors. Another big issue that came up was the appropriate placement of landscaping around signs. So you probably know of a sign or two that, because the plant they chose to plant next to the sign during the summer season sometimes blocks half of that sign because it's so big. So we said, yes, that's something we want to do. We wrote that into the sign, wrote that into the sign code as a reminder to landscape designers, don't forget that this is something you have to look at when you're doing a landscape design for a new development. We also wanted to provide and enhance high-quality public spaces. So, you know, good signage always makes a public place better. There is one instance where the courts have decided that it's okay to regulate content, and that is to protect children from harmful speech. And we wrote that into the purposes of this sign code, and that's where we will, you know, allow ourselves to be involved or in content of signs. So ensure content-neutral regulations throughout. So one of the key tests of whether or not your sign code is content-neutral is if you can substitute non-commercial speech on a commercial sign, and your sign is still legal. So if your commercial sign normally says, "Buy my tacos," and you decide that you want to have political speech on that sign, instead say, "Elect Phil," if the sign is still legal under the code, then it's content-neutral. Just one of the ways we make sure we're not regulating anything but the time, the place, and the manner of the sign. So add window signs as regulated signs. So our current code allows entire windows to be covered on the inside. So all the way people can see into a business or into a building from the outside is completely covered with signage, which doesn't count under our current code towards a sign budget for a property. So we had a long discussion about how we would decide whether it's a wall sign or a window sign, how much of a window sign can you, how much of a window can you cover before it starts counting towards your sign budget? We think we came up with some pretty good measures for that. Plus, open and transparent windows are better for being a walkable place. You know, when a window is covered, you can't see what's going on on the other side of the window. We also think it enhances public safety. If we can at least see into a business during business hours or even after business hours, it's always better for public safety. So we also knew that we had a lot of not-content-neutral sign regulations in exempt signs and temporary signs. So the current code puts these temporary and exempt signs into categories based on the purposes. So there's a political sign description and an exemption, and there's a real estate sign purpose and exemption, and all those kinds of different purposes. This code simplifies it and said, and says basically, if you are in this type of zone, you can have this much temporary signage for this purpose. So time, place, and manner is where we focused on that. So exempt signs, for example, signs not intended to be seen from a public right-of-way. So if you put a sign up and it's really intended for just being people who are at the front of your building but not on the street or on the public sidewalk, we're saying those are exempt. Signs carved into a building, like a facade or a plaque on the outside of a building, also exempt, four square feet maximum on that. Signs less than one square foot. Signs in arenas or playing fields that face into the playing field. Flags of any kind, and up to two, what we call flutter flags, which are like the long, narrow, skinny flags that look like they're on fishing poles. Neighborhood watch signs, exempt. Public signs, which have to be government signs, like street signs, stop signs, traffic regulation signs. Seasonal displays for whatever season you're displaying, and signs on business vehicles that are used during the normal course of business. So the proposed code names the type of sign allowed as a temporary sign. So temporary signs are banners, inflatable's, I think you saw an inflatable on the previous slide, very large dinosaur, a sandwich board, which can be on a public sidewalk or, you know, on a walkway along the side of a building, a yard sign that's large, 32 square feet, or a yard sign that's small, which is 16 square feet. Temporary event signs can be off-premise on private property, of course, with that private property owner's permission. And event types are named in the code for ease of time, place, and manner restrictions. Private signs in public right-of-ways. Right now, our code allows banner signs on the skybridges downtown, which are over public right-of-ways, and those signs are allowed on dual-ownership skybridges. So the city owns them along with a private building owner. They connect those two spaces. So it's, there are private contracts and agreements that are between the City of Billings and these adjacent building owners. These current regulations are not content-neutral. So for example, you cannot put a banner on the skybridge downtown unless you are a nonprofit organization. You can have sponsor names on that banner, but they cannot be more than 20% of that banner. There, it's very hard to regulate this because there are many non nonprofits that also want to advertise on those skybridges downtown. So we're not carrying forward these provisions. If the private property owners that own part of these skybridges and have a contract with the city for this ownership want to continue to put banners up on these skybridges downtown, they certainly can. We will just not have them as part of a permitting or regulatory scheme in our zoning. So we don't have to start or continue to look at content of banner signs. The billboard moratorium is moving forward. In the city limits, sign face credits will still accrue for any nonconforming billboard sign face that is removed, and that sign face credit can be used in a conforming location in another place within the city limits. Jerry, here's your sign. I told you I would put it up on the screen, so Jerry's billboard sign is on the left. But Lamar Advertising has the most billboard signs in the City of Billings, and they have the most sign face credits, although there are several other billboard sign companies. So both in the city and the county sign code, there are nonconforming signs. We know we're going to have nonconforming signs. We have nonconforming signs now from the last code changes. But how we deal with those nonconforming signs is very important to making the community meet the purposes of the sign code. So we discussed a lot about two categories of nonconformity, a minor and then major categories, and what could be done with a minor nonconforming sign or a major nonconforming sign. So the major categories of nonconformity are off-premise signs in the city limits, that's not the case in the county, in the city limits, dangerous signs, in other words, signs that are so damaged, visibly damaged, that they could come down or fall over and damage property or people, hurt people. A sign characteristic that's more than 20% over the proposed standard in the sign code, so 20%, 25% larger than the maximum, 25% taller than the maximum. If it encroaches over a public right-of-way, that's considered a major nonconformity. If it has nonconforming illumination, it's not an allowed sign type in the district where it's located. And signs that were approved by a variance that meet one of those above criteria. So if you have a variance that allows you to have three signs instead of just two, that's not one of the criteria for a major nonconformity. The minor nonconformities are 20% or less above the standard in the code. It's a nonconforming setback, but not over the right-of-way. So the setback, you know, let's say it should have been five feet back from the front set, front property line, but instead it's only one foot. So it's a nonconforming setback, but it's not over the city right-of-way or the county right-of-way. And the nonconforming separation. So in most, most of the sign code existing and proposed, there's a 150-foot separation distance between signs on the same piece of property. So what do we do with the major and the minor? Major says, no changes that increase that nonconformity. So you can't put it further out over the public right-of-way. You can't make it even larger than it is now if it's nonconforming for the size, that sort of thing. Change to a nonconformity would require 100% compliance with the new code. Minor says changes are allowed. Repairs and maintenance are okay, but not replacing a static sign face with an EMD sign face unless that's an allowed characteristic or illumination for that sign type in that district. So if you cut down the sign and replace it entirely, it has to be a conforming sign. And that if you lose your legal nonconforming status, then it requires replacing with a conforming sign. Now, this is going to be a lot of work for a lot of sign companies because right now the code is very vague on when signs can be changed or upgraded and still be considered okay under the existing code. So we're going to have to work through some kind of criteria and checklist to make sure that we're applying this new code correctly, which kind of segues nicely into our next section, unless you would like to take some comments on the sign code before we jump into nonconformities.
Actually, Nicole, I think that might be a good idea.
Okay.
As there was a lot of information in the signs. So I would call initially for any questions or comments from members of either the county or the city zoning commissions, if we have. Mr. Chairman?
You'll have to come to the microphone.
Okay.
So everyone can hear you. So everyone can hear you.
Good afternoon. My name's Paul Cox. I live at 2951 North Slope Trail here in Billings. And first of all, I wanted to commend the working group that was flagged to put together all the work to help with putting this draft together. Did a great job for the last couple of years. It was commendable to see everyone show up. So that was the first thing I wanted to bring up and take note of especially. It was all volunteer. We had a lot of people from either sides of a political, not a political issue, but an aesthetic issue, and I think worked hard to come up with something good. I know I don't want to take a whole lot of time with other issues, but this is a personal comment now at this point. And one of the things that I'd like to raise is an issue regarding the advertising signs that are attached to bench, bus benches. And the bus benches around town, they've got a little different standard than the rest of the, of the community for signs. So I'd like to ask that it be included into, into the sign code. I know that it's an issue regarding placements of signs into the right of ways and the right of ways owned by the city. But asking the city to stand up to the same standards that the rest of the community is should be included in this somehow. How it's done and how it's worded, I think I'd leave it up to staff to do that. Whether it fall under Section 271408, which is temporary signs, whether it be included on that as advertising signs attached to bus benches, something like that, or maybe at a Section 271408, which is the off-premise billboard signs. Off-premise signs are advertisements that are directing the viewer to go to a different place to do whatever is being asked. The purpose and intent of each of these sections is well-written, and the restrictions should be followed to, again, the same letter of the code as the rest of the, of the commercial community is being asked to follow. So how it's done, I'm not exactly sure. I know it, it's an issue of the right of ways, but I think it needs to be addressed. And my own personal viewing of signs, you can, I've seen more bus benches with advertising signs on them that aren't even on the, the bus routes. I've seen advertising signs on bus benches that are so close to the right of way that they are almost on the sidewalk. I think these kinds of signs should be addressed. And I don't quite see it in the code at this point. If it's, if it can't be put there, then I'll chase it down in a different way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Nicole, did you want to comment on any, just on that particular issue, if that was a matter of your discussion?
Well, it's a, it may be that it's a policy discussion that has to happen at a level that's not zoning. Because the bus bench program, the advertising program is through MET, Metropolitan, the Transit System. And the city council sets the policy and signs the contracts with that business that places the bus benches, maintains them, changes out the advertising. So maybe there needs to be more of a discussion at that level rather than trying to figure out how to regulate it through zoning because it is a contract system through the city council. Not saying that, I'm kind of saying, let's not do it. I'm saying, I don't disagree with some of the comments, but it may not be, the way to tackle the issue may not be through zoning.
Okay. Jerry?
I don't think the city or any government in it should be allowed to be in private practice of business. Sign, sign business is a very good business when people want to work in the city running and they're trying to hit them off as a bunch of BS. City should have their butt ran out immediately. If anything, they should be able to maybe rentless park their benches on some kind of scale to the sign companies. There'd be competition for them.
Okay. I heard most of that. I'm not sure if anyone else.
I just moved the microphone over there so that people could hear what you were saying.
Additional comments from anyone on the, on the sign ordinance, in particular, anyone on Zoom or on phone or any other medium?
Troy, Tyler, or Jack, do you have questions or comments on the sign code section?
Hearing none, I think we will, oh, wait a minute.
Jack King is, sir. Okay, Jack's question was about the downtown sandwich board sidewalk signs and what category those fall into. And those are temporary signs, Jack. Part of that permitting that is done downtown is under the umbrella of the Downtown Business Alliance, as well as you will find it in Section 14. Let's see, I'm going to give you the right, the right code, Section 1408, temporary signs. And those are regulated by type. So the sandwich board, eight, eight square feet per side and four feet in height, that's in Section 271408 on page 43 of the draft. I don't have any more.
Just going to do the phone number one more time, 237-6120.
237-6120 for phone call comments. And then we have people here who might want to, in the audience.
Okay. I'm not seeing any takers in any, I think it may not be a bad idea with the concern that was expressed here and comments from Jerry, just to make note to that, to the city council.
Sure.
For them to maybe give some feedback prior to approving this or just at least make them aware of the concern that was expressed here tonight.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
And now we're ready for the nonconformity.
Okay. All right. So let me get back to that section. So nonconformities is a legal term that we use when we change a code, a zoning code especially, and suddenly something that's existed for many years is becoming nonconforming to the new code. And all zoning amendments that make at least a few properties nonconforming, whether that's because of a setback or building height or a, you know, a sign area that's too large or setback that's not enough. So it can be a significant burden on property. We certainly do a lot of discussions with banks and lenders and underwriters and insurance folks who want to know if a property can be rebuilt just as it is if it were to be damaged or destroyed entirely. So if it burned down, can we rebuild it? This didn't used to be such a big deal for lenders and insurance people until about 2005, 2008. And that was when we had the big storms, the hurricanes wiped out whole sections of cities that were older sections of cities. And their new zoning didn't allow a lot of what was destroyed to be rebuilt. So the losses for those lenders and insurers were huge. So they have become more strict about ensuring that the properties that they lend money on or they insure can be rebuilt. Now, some nonconformities, quote unquote, can be cured through the approval of a zoning variance. So your setback doesn't meet the current code. If you need a rebuild letter, we will take you through the zoning adjustment process and get a variance to let you rebuild at that nonconforming setback. Or if it's a nonconforming, the building's too large for the property, the lack coverage is too big, we can do the same thing. So anything that's numerically based in the code can be allowed to vary through the Board of Adjustment. Now, not all variances are approved. And there are no use variances. So if you have an auto body shop in the middle of a neighborhood in Billings, you can't go to the Board of Adjustment and get a zoning variance. It's just not possible. The only way to make that use conforming, if you could get it done, would be to change the zoning of that property to a zoning that allows that use. But that's probably not good planning. Some nonconforming uses should go away over time through the enforcement of the code and through the nonconforming restrictions and regulations. So our nonconforming section is staying very much the same as it is now. So you can continue to be legally nonconforming. You are quote unquote grandfathered under the existing code unless and until something happens. The use is abandoned for 12 or more months consecutively. So if you have a horse on your property, you get annexed to the city, you can continue to have a horse on your property forever and a day until that horse leaves that property and there's no replacement horse that comes on within a year. Then you can no longer have a horse on that property. Or say the auto body repair closed down, closed up shop, building stood empty for 366 days, it cannot have an auto repair business come back in there. Or if the structure is destroyed by 50% or more of its replacement value at the time of destruction. We have applied this many times over the years as people have accidents and disasters in their homes that are nonconforming for one reason or another. And so they bring in their remodeling renovation permit. And so we look at the valuation of that permit versus the valuation of the building and the property published by the Department of Revenue. And as long as that renovation value is less than 50% of that value, you can go ahead. If you pick that structure up and move it, it has to conform wherever it goes, has to conform to the zoning. And/or you convert that structure or property to a conforming use. You can't go back, can't go backwards once you've brought it into conformance with the That really, you know, that's the shortest nonconforming discussion I've ever had, but it's really all the essentials you need to know. No matter the size of a lot that exists at the time this zoning code is adopted and it allows that zoning district, it allows a single-family use, you can build a single-family home on that property, even if it's too small under the new code. So that provision continues as well. So jumping right into the last thing, the measurements and definitions, really, this is just a really open-ended question. We put all of how you measure things except for the, some very specific ways to measure signs. We kept that in the sign code. But, so height and clearance, how to measure sign area, how to measure freestanding signs versus wall signs versus three-dimensional signs, all of those specifics are still in the sign code. But everything else, how to measure a front build-to area, how to measure a front facade, how to measure a roof line, how to measure a story height, how to measure a clear vision area at the intersection of streets. All of that is at the beginning of this code, Section 271800. This is really the capstone piece of the code. It's where my, when I was learning to write code, the person who was mentoring me says, spend 95% of your time on those definitions and the rest of the code will be fine. Which is true. If you don't spend enough time on your definitions, if you start falling into what I call the trap of trying to regulate by definition, then you get in trouble. So we have worked a lot as we worked through the different code sections to pull all of those terms into one place, make sure that they're just defining a term and not regulating something through that term, through that definition, through those words, then we have it all in one place. So that's the capstone of the zoning code. Except for tomorrow, the city zoning commission will meet and review the updated zoning map and the administrative procedures. And then on the 24th, the county zoning commission will meet on the updated map for the county and their administrative procedures. And then October 12th, the county zoning commission will hold their last public hearing on Project Recode, look at the entire code together, figure out what their recommendations are going to be, if they want to make suggested changes to the wording of specific sections, and then forward their recommendation to the county commissioners for their consideration on November 10th. The city zoning commission, I published a legal ad today. We'll have a special meeting on October 14th just to review the city code sections and formulate their recommendations to the city council for their consideration in November. So that's where we're at.
Quick question.
Sure.
So we had two instances in the last.
Couple of weeks where either the county or the city zoning commission did not have a quorum. Do those public hearings have to be repeated?
If you want to go over those, like for this evening, the city zoning commission didn't achieve a quorum, so we could review signs, nonconformities and measurements and definitions at the 14th, if you like.
But it does not require an additional public hearing?
No.
Beyond?
No. All of the meetings are recorded and commissioners can view those on the Community Service Television, on the Planning and Community Services Facebook page. They could ask us to send them the recording of the hearing. They have received all of this information on each code section ahead of time. There was nothing in the zoning code that requires us to do serial public hearings.
Okay. So then we just put out that they, that they have access to these public hearings in a variety of different formats. And unless someone specifically says we absolutely need to have them repeated, we can assume that they can follow up on their own?
Yes.
Works for me. So at this time, any additional, we just had two more sections on nonconforming and on measurements and definitions. Is there any comment or questions from members of the commission or at this point, public or anyone else? And again, I'm going to give that number, 237-6120, if you want to call in. Not seeing much activity over there.
Or if anybody on Zoom?
Anyone here, Zoom folks? If not, I am going.
Oh, there's. Oh, there's.
Oh, what?
Go ahead.
Less, less about the presentation today and more about the future meetings. Can you hear me okay?
I can, this is Tina Volokh.
This is Tina Volokh. I'm going to ask a couple of questions on future meetings.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tina.
Go ahead, Tina.
My, my first one is that I have looked at the segments as they have been produced and I haven't gone through all of the pieces of the section that was discussed tonight, but I know that the last meeting covered about a 300-page segment, if I remember correctly, of the code. Is there going to be at any time a printed version that would be available for purchase of the code? Or are we going, are you asking that people download? A 300-page document is going to probably run my printer dry and I, it would be preferable to have something that I could get as a single document that would put everything together after perhaps the zoning, the city zoning commission meets in October. Is anything like that contemplated, which is, is one thing. And then I know that this is available on the, this is available on Channel 7. Is there anywhere available, Nicole, a compilation of the presentations that you have made? Again, I'm here in an unofficial capacity, but I am a member of the West End Task Force and I would like to be able to talk to them a bit about what has been shown and what had. It would have some of that helpful.
Okay, thank you, Tina.
Okay, thank you.
Her two questions involved, the, the materials for the last few meetings are voluminous, like over 300 pages. And she was asking if a printed version of the whole code would be, is something that we've talked about or thought about? And would that be available or even if people wanted to buy a printed version of the code in the future? And absolutely, I cannot speak for the Planning Division manager, but when we first started down the public hearing process, we talked about a list of people who may want a printed code after it's adopted, but we certainly could discuss further making a printed codes available for a fee. Our current printed version of the city zoning code or the city and county zoning code is $30. This new code, not the staff reports and the existing codes and the code sections, all those staff reports, the whole code together, 27100 through 271800, is about 400 pages. So we could certainly talk about what, making that available printed and what the fee might be for that. Also, she wanted to know whether the presentations that I've done at each one of these public hearings, if those would also be available to people who wanted them on paper or as a power, a PDF of the presentation. And absolutely, Tina, we can provide you a PDF of the PowerPoint presentation for you to use with your task force members or anybody who you'd like to talk with about the different topics that we've covered. We can also provide you printed versions of the public hearing materials, those 300, 400-page packets of information, but those would be a different charge than just the whole draft zoning code. So.
Appreciate that they're voluminous and, but, you know, I think one of the things that I am concerned about is that I think there is not a great deal of public, I don't want to say interest, but there's not a great deal of public awareness perhaps of what is coming. And I, I feel somewhat that, at least for the folks that I, I work around, that they would like to know at least some of what's coming in order to make any kind of comment when the council has hearings. And when do you think those hearings for the council would be? Do you have a timetable?
Her question was, thank you. And what is the potential timetable for the city council hearings to start? I believe we have scheduled that for the first reading and I'm sure that there will be multiple dates that we continue on public hearing is November 9th.
And then just since I'm already talking, we will have a definitive price and way for people to request hard copies of the code available in the next couple of days. So we will find a solution for that.
Thank you both very much. I appreciate it.
Also reminding for Monica that there is a work session for the city council on October 19th to, just after the city zoning commission meets in a special session to formulate their recommendation to the city council. We will go to the city council and talk with them in an informal work session about the city zoning commission's recommendation and everything that we've heard along the way in these public hearings. Anyone else on Zoom?
Over there? No?
Okay.
I'm going to assume that that's it then and close this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone on Zoom and in the audience. Tune back in tomorrow for maps and administrative procedures. Thanks.
And that's city only.
City only tomorrow. Thanks.
And is that in the same format or is that?